Tonight, I think it's important that as always, we start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I believe we'll be starting the meeting tonight by turning things over to the superintendent for the celebration of virtual excellence.
Great, thank you. Mr. Misselli, could we go to that page, please? So actually, we'll just stay on pictures right now. So we have two awards tonight. I'm so excited that we're doing some celebration of excellence this month. I'll start there. And our first one is the Hobie Award and our recipient this evening is Julia Zimmerman. Give Julia a round of applause to start. Virtual though it is. So since 1958, the Hugh O'Brien Youth Leadership Program, better known as HOBE, has provided leadership development training to positively impact the lives of thousands of high school students in the U.S. and abroad annually. HOBE's program allows high school sophomores to realize their leadership talents and apply them in becoming effective, ethical leaders in their home, school, community, and workplace. Students will attend a three-day, we hope, in-person seminar. If not, hopefully, it will be virtual and practice hands-on leadership activities, meet leaders in their state, and explore their own personal leadership skills while learning how to make a positive impact in their community. Teachers nominate a grade 10 student who exhibits the following traits and skills: outstanding communication, critical thinking, creative problem solving, strong decision-making, sensitivity to others, charismatic personality, courage to speak out, and challenge, and interest in community service. Julia received multiple teacher nominations. Julia has and continues to make a very positive impact on Bolton High School. She carries a very rigorous schedule for her classes and shows her talent in all of them. Julia is already showing how she is a leader among her peers. She is recognized for her ability to think critically about things in Bolton and outside of it. She also has the ability to start conversations about difficult topics and speaks out against injustices. With Julia's strong work ethic and desire to learn, she is well-deserving of this award. We are very proud that she will be representing Bolton High School at the upcoming leadership conference. Julia, congratulations to you and your family. A well-deserved honor, young lady. Well done. Jules, would you like to say anything?
I guess, just like, thanks. Thank you for the award.
Well deserved. Congratulations. Next, we have the Daughters of the American Revolution Good Citizen Award, and it gives me great pleasure to announce Cassidy Collins as this year's recipient of the DAR Good Citizen Award. Cassidy is now eligible to participate in the National Scholarship Program sponsored by this organization. Way to go, Cassidy. The Daughters of the American Revolution was established in 1890 by a group of pioneering women in our nation's capital who wanted to perpetuate the memory of the men and women who fought to make our country free and independent. DAR members are passionate about educating the youth of America and contributing to schools and student programs in a variety of ways. And in support of that, the DAR Good Citizen Award and Scholarship Contest was created in 1934 to provide scholarships and awards to outstanding students throughout the country. Each year, teachers from high schools across the country select students from the senior class who demonstrate dependability, service, leadership, and patriotism in their homes, schools, and communities. Cassidy transitioned to Bolton High School during the second quarter of her junior year with a transcript reflecting high honors and continued her success here at Bolton High School in honors and AP courses. While moving to a new school naturally poses many challenges, Cassidy acclimated very quickly. She was inducted by acclamation into the Philip C. Lagoury Chapter of the National Honor Society, not only on her academic transcript and character, but also due to her strong service and leadership credentials. Cassidy has been an active member of the JROTC in South Carolina for years and hopes to continue her path of service and leadership to her country through an ROTC program at her chosen university. There you go. That's awesome. Cassidy is a selfless and caring young lady who has risen as a natural leader and a role model to all who know her. These qualities and more make Cassidy a very deserving recipient of this award. Cassidy, congratulations to you and to your family on this wonderful honor. Way to go.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Even being here for like, this will be my first full year now. And so it's just a big honor. Thank you, guys.
Well, we love having you and congratulations.
Thank you.
Chair O'Neill, that concludes tonight's celebration of excellence.
Thank you. Congratulations to our recipients, and it's nice to hear about some of the good things happening during all this. I believe that next we'll be moving to comments from the audience. Do we have any of those this evening?
Mr. Mishricki?
Okay, good evening, everybody. For letting me share. I'm going to attempt to share my screen, not because I want you to read off of it, a brief video. Okay, I hope that's working, and if it's not, somebody could just let me know. That'd be great. So thank you so much for letting me address you, but I know that, you know, you don't have a ton of time, so I'll be as brief as possible. I'm here to share why I think it is in the best interest of the town of Bolton, the Bolton Public Schools, the high school, and especially the track team to consider the construction of a track and field facility. I know you don't have a lot of time, and so I'm going to try to keep myself to four minutes or less. And then I do have some students here to share as well. So I'm going to focus on just three points. But I tend to be long-winded, but I also believe that there are many reasons why this is a good choice and why it's in the best interest of the town. So I typed a very long proposal, but I assure you each point has been individually kind of thought over. And if you would just do me the honor of reading it and considering it and passing it on to anyone you think it might apply to, that'd be great. So the three things I wanted to share would be, my first point, which is included in here, but I'm not going to be scrolling through my document, is I think it's in the best interest of the Bolton Public Schools that we continue to attract as many students, both from within Bolton and from without Bolton, to our school system. I don't think it's a secret that we sometimes lose some talented students, both academic and athletic, to other schools, whether they be private schools, whether it's students from Columbia.
Mark, you're frozen. Try turning off your picture and see if we can hear you still.
As we keep our faculty at capacity and ensures that we keep our school system top-notch and competitive. So I think a track facility is essential to that effort. And I also think within that same vein, if Bolton is a tiny town, but Bolton to continue to have its own district in this era, especially financial constraints might move towards things like regionalization, Bolton High School should be a whole school. I think it's in the best interest that it offer the same offerings that virtually every public high school in the country offers and has offered for decades. And I think that will help keep our school, Bolton High School, quite simply. I also have a lot of photos that I have included, so I would just like to share them because they can express a lot more than I can. This is our current track team home base, which is parking lot out behind the school. Keep in mind that we work from March through June, and that's outdoor track. Our indoor track also has to work outside. So we have one of the biggest teams in the school district. We make up more than half the athletes competing each year at Bolton High School. Other athletes get to train on an actual start and finish line. That seems like a small thing, but our athletes are using a jump rope here on the soccer field, which we're not allowed to step on, which I think says it all. I'm not even going to elaborate. Our javelin throwers work in a muddy field in the corner because, once again, they're not allowed near the soccer fields because, of course, we know the soccer fields are badly in need of repair and better drainage as well. Our long jump runway, if you want to call it that, which would be very generous, is blacktop. It's too short, and we jump into a pit that was made by a community member for us. And we're so fortunate to have that, but in no way is that an adequate facility for our jumpers. I'm not going to bring up the issue of safety. It speaks for itself, but if one were to read my document, it's pretty evident, and so is this picture. Hurdling on uneven grass and a tilted field on the side of a soccer field that we're not allowed to go on. And it's not just the soccer field. We are not given permission to work on any of our fields, which leaves us virtually no actual training area. Our kids are stretching on blacktop as well. Shin splints are a regular problem. We go to Coventry to practice pole vault, and I'd like to point out that our Coventry to practice all after practice because I'm only one coach. So sometimes they end up doing four or five hours of practice Friday afternoon so they can learn pole vault, but I assure you, they all show up wanting to pole vault. Here we are training on what is primarily our sprint track, which, as you can see through the duration of the season, is covered in either ice dust or dirt, but usually it's covered in all three, which is a simple recipe for an injury. And it'd be really nice to say find a safer spot, but our options are a parking lot or the side of the field. So that's not really an option. And this is my favorite picture because we see our kids making the best of what's around them, and I think we owe it to them to do the best. But as I started, I think that what's in the best interest of the track team and Bolton High School athletes is in the best interest of the community as well. So to me, that's a win-win-win. I have a lot of concrete examples of why this benefits academic safety, making the town more attracting and appealing, keeping people coming to our schools and property values. But I'll just close by reading from the 2019 NEASK Accreditation Visit Committees Report, because
Mark, you're frozen. We cannot hear you.
60, which is exactly what the chair said to the Bolton High School.
Mark, Mark, we didn't, Mark, we didn't hear any of that.
Ah, okay. Where did I leave off?
You were frozen. You started to, you were referring to the 2019 NEASK report. That's as much as we heard.
Okay.
We still can't hear you, Mark.
I'm going to take that as a no.
There, now I can hear your voice.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to walk through the house and I'm going to try the kitchen and I'll be done in a minute. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. It also might help us, a few of us turn our video off. Sometimes that helps with Zoom and then some Chromebooks. Just for his presentation.
Okay. So at the end of the NEASK visit, the committee chair spoke to the faculty, and his number one critique, as you'll see in the report, was that our athletic facilities did not instill a sense of pride in our athletes and that they, quote, "looked more like 1960 than the 21st century." And in that official report, they wrote, "A lack of adequate outdoor athletic fields is a significant deficiency that impacts student life on campus. Poor drainage often renders the school soccer field unplayable. There is no track and field facility. Tennis courts are in a state of disrepair. Of course, those have since been repaired. Therefore, Bolton athletes are often forced to compete away from home and lose the opportunity to compete in front of peers, with the exception of..."
Can't hear you again, Mark. Mark, you're frozen and we cannot hear you.
...in programs in some way, the capital budget does not reflect the needs of the athletic complex. The lack of proper field drainage, tennis courts that are in need of repair, as well as additional resources necessary to support the many athletes engaged in the track and field program are problematic. Some areas of the field complex require remediation for both performance and safety reasons. It is not uncommon for soccer fields to be unplayable, thus denying student athletes the ability to practice. For track members to be practicing in parking lots and running on roads is a, poses a safety issue. The athletic director and school leadership have presented various budget proposals. Recommendation: Develop Long-Term Planning. I think for those reasons and the many more I list in my document, which I really, really hope you read, I just want this to be a consideration, but I did invite some students here, so I'll cut my video. But if you guys have time, I'd like to just let them each, I asked them for 30 seconds to a minute. So do we have time for that? If not, I could always record their statements and share it later.
Please take your time.
No, all right. Well, thank you very much. So I will forward all the one video in case you would like to watch that at your leisure. But the first student, who is also alumni, actually, is Riley Gardner. So if Riley to share why this is important to him, that's great. And I hope there's something nice in the back printer, because I don't even know. Right.
Hello? So is this good?
Hi, Riley. You're good.
Okay. Hi, my name is Riley Gardner. I'm alumni. I graduated 2018. And during my senior year was the first year of Mr. Mishricki and Mr. Smith being the coaches of the track team. And I had always, like, since freshman year, I'd wanted to do track, specifically throwing. But we simply didn't have the facilities at all. I was told by Coach Kennedy, basically, go to Coventry, and that's all we have. When we started, we didn't have any shotputs. We didn't have a javelin. We had a single discus. Basically, we had nothing. For our throwing, we had to set up a bunch of gym mats outside in the back of the school, so we didn't crack the pavement. It didn't work. There's some cracks back there, but a track would be a great thing to have. So the only reason I was really able to do what I did was I had already had a relationship with people from Coventry since I played football there. And so I had connections with those people, and I was able to go there on weekends and practice with them. And just like the sheer difference in like what they had versus what we had, like, I understand, we were still building up the team, but like they had a shed full of, full of equipment, like they had more than four hurdles, which was a foreign concept for us. They didn't have to share shotputs. The first time I ever threw a shotput was at a competition because we didn't have any to throw with, so we had to borrow them from other teams. Yeah, it would be a huge help, like, safety-wise, because plain and simple, a parking lot isn't a track. We can't pretend it is, no matter how many times we measure it. See, oh, if we run around three times and it counts as a full track. But I mean, shotput specifically, it's not a tremendously difficult thing to have. It's literally seven feet of concrete, and if you want, you can have gravel. But it's not a very difficult thing to have. But I feel like it could, as Mr. Mishricki touched on, it could bring in more people, because, I mean, like, going, when I was going into high school, like I said, I wanted to do track, but we just simply didn't have the facility. So I'm sure there's dozens of other people that saw, saw the same thing. I mean, EO has a track, so for Columbia students that are deciding if they want a track, it's far easier to choose EO over Bolton when we just don't have one. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Riley. I know Mr. Mishricki's trying to talk, but we can't hear him.
A year and a half ago. So, oh, I'm sorry. Claire actually graduated in the spring. Go ahead, Claire.
Hi, can you hear me?
Hi, Claire.
So, um, yeah, I had a great experience with Bolton Track, although I would have loved having a track in our field, but I was captain for two years, and that gave me great leadership skills, and I got all-conference. I went to, I placed at states. And I now compete at Eastern because of my experience for track. But so for me, I was a jumper, and like Mr. Mishricki showed the picture of the pit, like, it was a really, like, the runway was all pavement. So I actually, it was my junior year, I developed like shin splints, and that caused me to sit out on some practices and even one or two meets. And also, just like a lot of the sprinting and all that on the pavement was really tough for, like, everybody, like, for me, the shin splints, but other people developed injuries. And I think just because all of our competitors, they all have tracks. I, maybe like one or two doesn't have tracks, including us. But like, so it puts us at a slight disadvantage because they practice every day with a track and we don't. So I just think we would have very much benefit from one.
Thank you, Claire. Next is senior Cory Peacock, who throws javelin. He'll be still here.
Hello.
Hi, Cory.
Hi, Cory.
Um, so my name is Cory Peacock. I'm a senior at high school, and I just have a little to say. Throughout my four years here at Bolton High, one of my absolute favorite experiences has been being on the track team. Um, but one of my biggest setbacks throughout my career was not having an actual track for me to practice on. Though I feel my progress was outstanding with the help of my extremely hard-working, dedicated coaches, I felt that having access to something more like the real thing, being a track, would have greatly benefited me in addition. As I'm proud to have these wonderful gentlemen backing me as my mentors as I begin my collegiate career as a javelin thrower, as I plan to in college, um, I cannot help but question whether or not I'm missing out on something, not having the opportunity to practice on an official javelin pitch. Looking back in these four amazing years of track and field, I really hope sincerely that future athletes who go to Bolton will be able to have a real track to practice on, as I strongly feel that with that, I, along with other fellow athletes of my class, could have had just that small edge in order to obtain things such as scholarships at our respective universities. That's all I have.
Thanks, Cory. And we just have one more student with us, which is George Chakolsky. George has come to Bolton from Columbia. George is a senior distance runner.
Hi, can you all hear me?
Hi, George. We can.
That's great. Um, so I came from Porter, obviously, and a lot of times at Porter, the general consensus is if you like athletics, go to E.O. Smith. Everyone really kind of overlooks Bolton High School. I had the pleasure of meeting Mr. Mishricki and Mr. Smith at a running camp, like, two years ahead of time. So I knew personally, this seems like a great place. But a lot of kids don't have that. They get their one-day tour, and they don't really get all they could. I think if students could see a good track and good athletics, and they, they know that they could compete and have fun, they would come here more. And the numbers are, really, a lot of the students from Porter go to E.O. Smith. They go away. And we could get that number up. We could get more students here, and they would enjoy it, and they'd stay. And I just think having a track and having good athletic facilities for them to participate in would help them a lot. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you all. First of all, thank you, students, for showing up. Thank you, members of the Board of Education, Administration, and Community for hearing us out. I'm happy to discuss it further, but I know I went way, way over time. So thank you. I hope everybody has a great night and stay healthy and safe.
Thank you, everyone, for your commentary. It's helpful to have all input from all parties. And I know this has been an issue that we've talked about for years, and hopefully, we won't continue talking about it for years. Next, we have additions to the agenda. Oh, do we have any more comments from the public? Any submitted or anyone else here? Okay. Do we have additions to the agenda?
We do not this evening. I would just like to say thank you to Mr. Mishricki and our students for coming out tonight. It's greatly appreciated. And to our honorees, you all don't need to stay on, but you're welcome to continue to join us.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're on to routine business then. Chair O'Neill.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of the December 10th, 2020, regular business meeting?
So moved. This is Chris.
Thank you. Second?
Second, this is Ben.
Chris and Ben, thank you. Is there any discussion or edits that anyone would like to see on these minutes?
This is Chris again. I have no edits, but I would like to thank the superintendent for following up on my request of the last meeting to offer minutes that are a bit more reflective of what the board members actually ask and say. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
You. Yes, they were very detailed. Anyone else? Okay, all those in favor approving these minutes, say aye.
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 Opposed. We have an abstention.
Me. Scott.
Scott Rich, stains. That passes unanimously, or except for Scott, I'm sorry. Committee reports, Kappa Committee.
So our Kappa Committee met with the Board of Selectmen and the, you know, the overall committee on December 16th, and we reviewed the, the lists that we had prepared and presented to the board previous to that. We actually went through a very detailed list of the full five-year capital improvement plan, kind of updating on what the scope of all the projects were moving forward, and then spent some time focusing on next year, the fiscal year 2022 plan. It's been decided that there, there's really two categories for projects in 2022. There's going to be the typical capital improvement plan that comes out of the town budget. And there's also expected to be a bond package, since there are a lot of large-scale, big-ticket items that are on the schedule. So as we were talking about what was going to go into the bond package, some projects actually, specifically one of the Board of Education projects, moved forward from the future projects because it kind of fit in with the projects that would be talked about for the bond. So the Board of Education projects that are anticipated to be part of the bonding package are the center school roof replacement and basement repair, the center school HVAC replacement of the existing equipment, potentially the new air conditioning in the center school based on the feasibility, the greenhouse at the center school, and the high school soccer fields and the science, high school science lab. That's the one that had been projected out in 2024, but it's been moved forward. Currently, it's been moved forward. The items in
Scott, I'm sorry. Was that the BCS Science Lab or High School?
High School Science Lab, sorry.
Yeah. Oh, that's what you said. I'm just confirming.
That's what I have in my, the notes.
No, I think it's Joe and Daryl, correct me if I'm wrong. I think it's the BCS Science Lab.
I believe so. I think it's the BCS Lab.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. You are correct. Sorry. BCS Science Lab.
No worries.
The, yeah, the high school science labs are fairly recent. The, the items that are included in the capital improvement plan from the budget are the center school exterior door replacement, the septic system evaluation, window, the balance or the window replacement, and high school commons, eight audio and lighting upgrades. The final meeting, our expected final meeting for Kappa is January 27th, where the list is going to be finalized and voted on, and then that will go to the Board of Selectmen. where the list is going to be finalized and voted on. And then that will go to the Board of Selectmen. There was some conversation when we were discussing the high school fields about some type of prep work to, to look into whether or not a track could be accommodated. The, the bond, I'm not quite sure how the timing is going to work for, from a design standpoint and getting estimates and getting into the bond. But there is, there has been conversation about that, that project being expanded to, at least to provide the foundation, the, the pad size big enough for a track. And so it is the Board of Selectmen are aware of, of the request and the need and the desire to have that. So I would suggest perhaps that, um, we follow up with Mr. Mishricky. Maybe they, uh, submit a similar letter to the Board of Selectmen. That's all.
I wondered too, if maybe we should bring that to our Kappa meeting. I could forward it on to the-
That's what I'm sorry. That's what I was suggesting. Maybe they, they submit to the Board of Selectmen so that when, ahead of that meeting. So it can kind of help inform the conversation of what, there's no, it's a TBD budget on that. No, we actually, we do have a placeholder dollars for that. But, um, prior to the January 27th meeting, I would, I think it would be helpful to have a letter sent to the Board of Selectmen.
Certainly good idea. Uh, thank you very much. Onto curriculum committee.
Yes, we met on Tuesday. Rhea also joined us. We had a review of the five-year plan for curriculum and how that's going to be addressed. You know, like each topic over the next five years. Um, we had a presentation on the state mandated and also created by the state. Um, of course, that's going to have to be in place, not next year, but the following year. Um, we have to at least offer it and it's African-American, Black and Puerto Rican Latinx course of studies. Um, and we had a really in-depth presentation on that. It looks like a pretty intense class. We also had a fantastic presentation on the probability, probability and statistics textbooks that she reviewed and, you know, piloted parts of, um, that we will be looking at possibly this meeting or next, Sarah?
Next meeting.
Meeting, okay. Um, but she did a lot of work and research to come up with what looks like a pretty good, textbook for us. That was it. Chris, was there anything else?
Yep, you covered everything quite well.
Thank you. I should have asked before, do anyone have any questions for Scott or now does anyone have any questions for Sue?
Uh, Scott, this, um, this is Rhea. Um, I just have a question about the field. Uh, so, so right now there is a plan for soccer, the soccer field, correct?
Yes. To improve the, in its current location, to improve the, the landscaping, the, the pitch of the slope of the field, the crown and the drainage, um, and then to re, you know, resat it. So the-
Okay, so that, would that, would that be enough work to incorporate the, a track or?
No. The, the flat area, the pad would have to be increased in size, the field re-centered if we're going to have a track. Accommodate, be accommodated around the soccer field. So it would, if the, the one point, roughly 1.5 million dollar placeholder fee that would not cover the expanded site, which the, the site slopes off pretty drastically after the field. So to build that up to the appropriate dimensions for the track is not included currently in the budget.
So do you think it would be another 1.5 mil?
No, when it wouldn't double it to, certainly to create the, the footprint. But, um, it just, it then is a question of what is, what is built? You know, that's, you have to create a bigger pad and then you have to, then if you start actually looking into the construction of a track, then you have that expense. There is also conversation about putting in the, and I, I'm not sure if it's in the budget or not. The, uh, at least the infrastructure for lighting. It would be conduit and bases, but not necessarily actually installing the lighting at this point, but having a pathways in place for that. So it could be used in many things as well.
And would you also, like in the center of the track, would you have those other activities?
That's, I don't know. That would be, it'd be the soccer field. So I don't know how some of the field events would work in conjunction with a soccer field in the middle.
Oh, the soccer field's in the middle?
That's how it would work, yes. We don't have that much land.
Oh, okay. Well, I really feel that, um, after listening to the, the coach and the students that it, it is important for us and also the Niasse recommendations that it's really important for us to, to do more than just talk about it if we can.
I, I fully agree. Understand that, like I said, so this is included in the potential budget for the, um, bonding at 1.5 million. We don't even have a number for the center school roof, which I believe is going to be in the $2 million range. Then the town is looking for a new fire truck at $630,000. And the demolition of the natural municipal center and whatever their hope to do, uh, do for the new or, or expanded town hall. So we're looking at a bonding package. If all projects are included of what, $7 million? That's going to go to the town for approval. And I don't disagree on what the high school needs by any means for, for athletics. I agree with everything they said about attracting athletes, retaining athletes, but. So I think the most, the best we can, um, with, at the minimum, we should be shooting for is to make it ready to receive a track. And not, because it will never, we'll never do the landscaping again to get it built up again.
Are there, Kristen, are there any, um, grant possibilities to write for grants? Or like locally or, you know, nationwide or?
We could do a GoFundMe page. Yeah, I mean, you know, really, I mean, that's really about it. I mean, probably going back, I'm not even sure how many years ago at this point. Uh, we had probably a year and a half or so worth of discussions with the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Ed um, about soccer, a track and field. There was discussion about making the tennis courts go from four to five, rearranging where things were. Um, setting up the conduits for lighting, but not putting lighting in. And then things just sort of happened and kind of fell apart. I, I guess is how I want to say that. So there's been discussion about this for as long as I've been here, which is nine years now. And there was discussion going on before I got here. So.
It, I'm, uh, if, if funding sources were found, like requests for, you know, proposals, would that be something that the board or the school, you know, the school district would, um, be interested in exploring?
Well, it would become a, a, a Board of Selectmen project because it goes out to bond. So I mean, I'm certain that the school system would be interested in that, but I cannot speak for the Board of Selectmen.
I've just been, I, I mean, I've written a couple of grants for the Bolton Heritage Farm Commission. And so I do work with, they all have to be approved by the Board of Selectmen. So everything's been approved. But you can get some, you know, there's money out there for things. So maybe, um, we could explore that anyway.
Absolutely.
I don't think anyone's going to turn down a grant, so.
Exactly.
Okay.
Chris?
When I was at the Cabe Convention in 2019, I approached the various architectural design firms that were there and asked if they could give me a ballpark figure on, you know, what does it typically cost for a high school track to be constructed? Um, and, you know, of course they hemmed and hawed and didn't want to give exact numbers. But they did say that, you know, you're, you're looking at probably two to $5 million, depending on how many bells and whistles and what sort of materials you make the track out of. So, and of course that would be in addition to the work that would need to be done to level the soccer field and, um, bring-
That number would include a lot of the sub drainage and prep of this subsurface that is already a lot in, in large part being accommodated by, it'd have to be increased, but that drainage system, you know, that, there are certain subsurface things that would be included in that number that may already be captured. But I don't disagree, you know, and, and then it's the field piece and how much, if it's land that's just dedicated to the, the field events. Um, and setting those up, which, you know, so that, that's why they hem and haw, by the way. There's too many variables.
Right.
I'm speculating.
Quite correctly, speculating.
Well, thank you. Thank you for letting me ask my questions.
By all means. You know, I think, um, to Scott's point, Scott, I think, and Andrew, that we can just forward to the first selectman and ask that it be, uh, shown for consideration at our next Kappa meeting, what Mark had shared with us tonight, since it's been shared with the Board of Ed, we should be able to just forward that on. Are you okay with that?
I am. I, I, but, you know, there's-
Benefit.
Minimum. There's also, you know, benefit to students showing up at a Board of Selectmen meeting and couple of comment there, I think.
Oh, I agree. I agree.
I think, I, I don't have any issue with forwarding it on behalf, you know, that with our blessing or our recommendation, so.
Yeah. And I think that Mr. Mishricky, uh, and company, and I think there's a lot more company than, that was with us tonight, um, would be very eager to go to a Board of Selectmen meeting and share. Um, and I, they were just trying to be respectful of certainly coming to the board first, which they absolutely did. Um, and I don't think the Board of Selectmen has a meeting prior to our Kappa meeting. So we could share it with Kappa and then I can share with, uh, them also the board's thoughts about them taking their show to the, a Board of Selectmen meeting.
Likely would be, if they went to the next one, would be the one where the capitalist is being voted on.
Correct.
Yeah, I think it would speak volumes to have, uh, someone other than us board members speaking about that. Definitely it was powerful to hear the personal experience rather than say about others' personal experience, but. Okay, so are we all done with that and the curriculum? Then we can move on to the finance committee report. Anne's with us, right?
Yes, yes. Thanks, Andrew. Um, okay, so finance met this morning. And, um, at this point, we are, the budget is 41% expended. As compared to last year, at this point, we were 40% expended. Um, and we have a few routine transfers and, um, a couple of transfers requiring, um, some, uh, board approvals. So, uh, if the superintendent could take us through this.
Kristen, you're muted.
I'm having a great conversation with myself over here. Thank you. We needed to purchase printers. Um, so we had a reclassification there out of technology supplies. Uh, from travel into technology since, uh, administrators aren't using travel monies to go anywhere right now. Um, we needed a, a subscription, uh, for seven Bolton High School students at $99 a month. Uh, we had a reclass to cover the cost of the East Con contract to support Director of Instructional Technology and Curriculum to manage, plan and implement new systems acquiring, uh, acquired during our one-to-one rollout. Uh, as well as support with data privacy, Google Asset Management and Technology Planning. You will also see additional monies, just as a precursor to what's coming in the budget ask for some additional, um, technology, uh, support, uh, for a day, day and a half a week next year. Because we are now one-to-one and teachers who are teaching all day, who get a stipend afternoons. Uh, it's just not enough for us to keep up with the issues that we're having and we need additional, um, technician support. So that part's coming in the budget. So that's just a precursor. Um, we, um, purchased, um, ViewSonic, 18 ViewSonic boards. Uh, we reallocated, um, some technology monies that were in the budget, um, to purchase these 18 boards. Um, our boards are failing. You've heard that before. You're going to hear more about it tonight from Sarah. And then there will be more to come on the boards a little bit later on for the remaining boards, 20 boards that need to still be purchased. Um, we have, um, five teachers who have, um, found that particularly in this blended learning environment, that their boards, that wasn't, uh, the way that teaching really can happen within their specialized classrooms and that they needed a large screen TV instead, art being one, a visual medium. So, um, Mr. Mcelly was able to get some great deals on TVs just before the, um, Christmas holiday. And so we were able to take care of that, uh, so that teaching can be much improved in those five particular classrooms at the high school. We had some more instructional supplies we needed to purchase. And, um, the purchase of, uh, books for every teacher, um, as well. Um, and then we have, um, uh, French online subscription and to purchase, um, some more instructional supplies. So we'll need a motion to approve the transfers, please.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the December transfers recommended by the superintendent.
Thank you, Ben.
Rhea seconds.
Thank you, Rhea.
Do we have any questions or discussion on this transfers? Hearing none. Uh, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed or would like to abstain? Hearing nothing. We'll continue on to our next item.
So could I just, I would like to call to the board's attention one other piece, if I could, because Sal is on the page where I need her to be. Um, and that is, uh, the 46,296, um, because I'll wear those. So, um, we were able to reduce, uh, reported expenditures by that amount. Um, because these monies were reclassified to the additional coronavirus relief funds that we received. If you recall, um, that I shared last month, we applied or we requested additional funds and were granted them. Uh, so you will see, uh, additional, uh, savings there. Um, so, uh, we currently have, up top, you will see, uh, a projected balance of 318,251 dollars. And we will be, uh, requesting a transfer, uh, total of $54,300. 50,800 of that will be going towards the purchase of 20 additional ViewSonic boards, which Sarah's going to talk about a little bit later, but since we're on this page, I just want you to have a precursor right now so that you can see that we well have the money to do this. And, uh, request a transfer of $3,500 to purchase seven touchscreen two-in-one laptops uh, for our, our six to 12 math teachers who are in real need of this technology to improve mathematics instruction in a blended learning environment. So we'll come back to this, um, but I wanted you to see about the monies there. Okay? Thank you.
Uh, is that all for finance?
That is all for finance. All set, Kasal. Thank you.
We, we need a motion.
Uh, not for this part. We're going to do it later on in the meeting.
Oh, okay.
So you're good. Good night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, onto Transportation Committee.
Um, yes, so transportation, um, Matt, and are we going over this?
Yeah, so we'll review it in executive session. Transportation met on December 21st and, uh, we're talking about that in executive session tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And now on to the student representative. All right, and now onto the Student Representative Reports.
Midterms start next week and they stretch from Thursday until Fri- or Tuesday until Friday with two exams for two hours each day. The students will be taking them from home while the teachers are conducting them in the classroom. And the junior PSATs are scheduled to be held on January twenty-sixth.
And the C I C C I A C confirmed today that winter sports will start on Tuesday of next week. So a lot of kids are excited about that. And students have been doing a great job wearing their masks and social distancing in school and also cleaning out their lockers every day before they leave. And Mr. Mishriki, who was just on, has created something called the BBN, which is kind of like a spin-off of a news network for the high school. And they're pretty funny. They have segments where he and Mrs. Noheimer hosts them and they give the latest school updates on sports events and other miscellaneous things. And they also recognize students who are doing well in school and have a segment with Mr. Dennis where he interviews different students who come on as guests. Some of these students have been Megan Minicucci for her cross-country achievements and a group in a personal finance class who has won the stock simulation. So it's pretty funny and that's all.
Thank you very much. Feel free to go do your homework or stay with us.
Andrew. Andrew. Can I ask a question, Rhea? Thank you. Jack. Is this only broadcast in the school or can?
Yes, it is not for public consumption.
Oh, okay.
And 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 I don't mean anything bad by that, partly because of the inside, you know, tongue-in-cheek type stuff. But also we don't seek out permission for kids to be in public. It really, everybody knows it's just kind of an internal piece.
Okay, thank you.
Emma and Jack, thank you very much. I know you have to study for midterms.
Good day.
Thank you. Do we have any other community meeting reports this evening? Does anyone?
This is Chris.
We have such things.
Well, yeah, there haven't, I haven't actually had any community meetings, but I did want to report that crack is considering, will be considering at the January meeting next week, changes to the crack constitution. These have kind of resulted from some questions I raised last summer. And the the major changes that they are proposing to make are to eliminate the Board of Directors. Currently, there's a confusing system where there's a correct council, which includes one representative from each member of crack. And then from that grouping was selected a Board of Directors, which was supposed to be, I think, thirteen to fifteen people or somewhere there and this caused some confusion, well, regularly caused confusion. And there was an issue this past summer where they nominated more people to be on the Board of Directors than the current constitution allowed for. And so I I raised some questions about that and they formed a committee to look at it and the I I think it's a very elegant change to simply get rid of the extraneous body and just have one body. It would also do some more minor things like allowing for virtual meetings to take place and allowing officers, the Executive Committee, to handle emergency matters in the event that a a meeting can't be arranged with the full council. So like I said, we'll be discussing that at next week's meeting and most likely voting on it at the February meeting. If if anyone would like to see a copy of the proposed changes, I'm happy to forward that document to you. But in in my view, they are good changes and will clarify the governance of crack.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or is there anyone else who has any community meetings to report on? Not hearing anyone, so I will now turn things over to the superintendent for the Superintendent of Schools to report.
Great, thank you. So as I think everyone is aware, we returned from distance learning on Monday, January eleventh. And I announced that we will remain in this model at this point until the end of February. Our BCS K five students are continuing with four days a week of in-person learning on Monday, Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays. Grade six through twelve is going to remain in hybrid and Wednesdays will remain distance learning day for all students. Families, again, who continue to opt for full-time distance learning will be allowed to continue to to learn from home. I will offer right now, we're hanging on by a thread staffing-wise. I hope that we can continue to remain open. And I, at this point, the only other thing I want to call the board's attention to at this point is that the state of Connecticut has received four hundred and ninety million dollars earmarked as like second phase of coronavirus relief funds to go specifically to education. I was notified on Tuesday that we would be rece- or Wednesday that we would be receiving notice tomorrow about how much money each district is going to receive or can allocate or spend and what it can be used for. You will recall the last time when they announced when we were going to find out, it took a number of weeks before we actually found out. So as soon as I know more, I will let the board know. I am hopeful that they allow communities like Bolton to also utilize funds this time around for things like staffing and technology, which we were not allowed to use in the last round because we have utilized the resources that we had the last time around for our PPE and all of those components for the most part. I'm going to now turn it over to Mr. Giarde.
Good evening, everybody. As Ms. Superintendent Heck said, it was on my slide, but yeah, the staffing is very tight right now and we're doing the best we can. It's day by day. Overall, the staff and students are, we're excited to be back in person this week, which has been great. To rewind a bit, though, the eight days prior to this week, starting on December twenty-first through January eighth, we had a very successful stretch of distance learning. The feedback from students, teachers, families about distance learning now compared to the spring has been very encouraging. Combined with the feedback we received, the administrators have made it a point to stop into many of the online classes and very pleased with the progress that we've seen firsthand. We have well-established schedules that are similar to in-person learning days, which has been a nice bonus from the spring to now. The online life classes are very well attended by students. Attendance is up. More and more students are putting their cameras on, which is a big thing, especially for engagement. And most importantly, students are becoming more actively engaged with their learning whenever we're learning remotely, whether it's a stretch of distance learning or it's our learning from home Wednesdays. We continue to make improvements because of the great work of the teachers and students. But also, just as equally important is the support we've received from parents and families because we know it's not easy to be working and have a full schedule and get your kid on the computer. Health and safety continues to be a priority in the buildings. Students are doing an awesome job of wearing their masks, social distancing, washing their hands, sanitizing their hands and using their desk shields. The shields have been amazing to the point where a couple of parents have asked me, what company did you use? Because I want my my work company to use them. So it's been a nice addition and the kids are appreciating having those. The families were excellent about notifying the school about travel plans over the break and following the guidance from the Health Department. Keeping the schools open and safe, I can't emphasize this enough, really is a team effort. And I'm happy to say that I feel like everybody's trying their best. BCS participated in the annual CCMC pajama day on December eleventh, which is a statewide effort to raise money for CCMC. The BCS staff and students raised one thousand three hundred and fifty-two dollars for CCMC, which is the highest amount since I've been in Bolton. This is great news, especially during these tough times. The staff is, last but not least, the staff and students are continuing to think of ways to bring positivity and excitement into the school days. We continue, Ms. Safran meets with the PBIAS Committee regularly to plan spirit days, share buster shout-outs on the morning announcements. And we share a lot of success stories with each other and with families. We try to make it a point to call home, to share some of those positives. Overall, the climate in the building is, I would say, very positive and we're just going to continue pushing forward together. I'm going to now turn it over to Mrs. Safran for a BCS remote learner update.
All right, thank you. As we can see here, we we are changing every month and there's a little bit of movement and what you'll notice recently is that overall we had a slight increase in the number of students that have switched to fully remote, the remote learning parallel track. So some increases, we did have some students return from being remote for a longer period of time to joining back in the classroom. We have some intending to return within the next few weeks, but I did snapshot. This is as of Monday's data. So it does change daily between students returning as well as choosing to go remote. We just really work with the parents, the families. We also work with the teachers to make sure we have successful transitions both ways.
So my subjects tonight is all that is normal in a high school and not pandemic-related. We're gonna 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 roll some normal type stuff tonight with with a few quick updates. So as the board might recall from conversations in the past, the the Manchester Community College program, dual enrollment program kind of dissolved because of of change in what they were doing. So we continue to investigate opportunities with colleges. We have an excellent partnership with University of Connecticut and what they call their ECE or Early College Experience Program. I'm happy to announce that just this week, they certified Mrs. Midford, our math leader, to teach University of Connecticut ECE calculus. This means that next year's students will have the opportunity to get the UConn college credit, an actual UConn transcript with calculus on it as well as a Bolton High School credit as they take Mrs. Midford's calculus class here at the high school. So that's that's a nice expansion of that program. As mentioned earlier by our students, our mid-year assessments are next week and fully remote for all students. And this signals the end of the first semester. So I just really want to thank all of our teachers and students for really a really good first semester. It it has been impressive. And it also signals that it's time to start planning for next year. So Ms. Johnson and our guidance team has already begun working with our leadership team to finalize our program of studies to include ECE calculus and some of the other new courses you've heard about. And we've started our whole work in Power School just to start getting ready for next year. So it's, you know, we barely finish the calendar year when we start talking about the next academic year. Another piece of all of this work is Mr. Gin Santi and his work, his upcoming meetings with juniors. So he will be partnering with our English teacher to meet with every junior coming up soon as they start to work on resumes, college essays, and all that other pre-application work integrating, you know, the writing, learning piece in the English class along with the the natural necessity of college stuff. And Mr. Gin Santi is also working with Mrs. Destiny to begin a work with eighth graders, not just a Bolton Center School. But I spoke with the school council at Horace Porter in Columbia this week and we have a tentative schedule for Amy and Todd to work with those students early in March. And similar story, Mrs. Safran shared with you just moments ago, the, you know, the remote numbers always change in the yellow column is our is our kind of our numbers that have changed since we last reviewed these. Everybody is up a tick and this, as Jessica said, also a snapshot, it changes daily. And we just work, I I think one of the other things that's made us successful as a district is our teachers' ability to welcome returning students and also to kind of embrace those families that have made the decision to to go remote. So that's worked pretty seamlessly for us this year. Is there anything I can answer for anybody?
Or are there any questions for any of us at this point under this part? Okay, I don't hear any, so we're going to move along to Ms. Malinowski for a curriculum update, please.
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me? Okay? Great, thank you. So as part of this curriculum update, I'd like to begin the presentation with the acknowledgement and appreciation of the tremendous work that our Bolton teachers have done to provide us this information this evening. I do want to share that the document I boiled down to, which will feel a little bit lengthy this evening, was originally sixty-five slides plus thirty pages in a document, plus another fifteen for the middle school. So I was very cognizant of who our ultimate audience was, but during this reflection, our teachers really dug in. It was about six weeks of diving in and reflecting on how the fall went. So the new normal is to pivot quickly and our teachers have been amazing in their ability to learn and teach at the same time. And I cannot understate that enough. They are learning how to teach in a whole new environment, rearrange their curriculum and draw their students in. And it, as Mr. Giard had alluded to, just visiting the classrooms now is it it's exhilarating on one hand to really see how amazing things have changed. Are we perfect? No, but no, no day is ever perfect in this in the classroom and we're continuing to work and to grow. And I I'm so proud of everything that everybody has done. So with all that, our curriculum, our curriculum were designed for daily in-person learning and not to be taught in all these different learning environments. And so teachers have been having to work to figure out how to make it meaningful content as well as meaningful assessment. So this evening's presentation will be an overview of what's happening in both curriculum and assessment. The teacher's effect reflection and analysis was guided by the examination of standards addressed, units and lessons reviewed in relationship to our various learning models, successes and challenges and documentation of assessment practices. We then connected this ongoing work to the Bolton Public Schools twenty twenty, twenty twenty-five strategic plan, which you see right here as a review. Mr. Miss Sally, I'm ready to go to our next slide. Our four goals, and I'm pointing these out, if you could take a note also of the graphics at the top, we have a little brain for the student success, the caring cultures, the talent development and resource stewardship. So as the administrative team and the leaders, we reflected on all the work that the teacher brought forward to us. We also saw natural connections to this strategic plan. And usually about this time of year, we're about ready to give you the beginnings of our strategic plan update. So we thought we would tie this together because all of our work very much aligns to these goals. And when now you can't see them very clearly, all of our little action steps, and they're not little, but they're little print, little font, action steps underneath each goal. And so the graphics you will see throughout. So to begin with the district-wide trends and all of these points that you can read, and I'm not going to read each one, again, we'll be here all night, even with the fourteen slides I have of this. Do all address all four of our district goals in some way? And I do have to say, the ongoing support for the technology and the online resources from this board, from our administrative staff, from our teachers teaching about it, from our community members sharing what's happening in other places has really been a lifeline for us. So we will be discussing technology a little bit later, but that really has allowed us to do what when I what I hear in other districts doesn't happen quite in the same way. Hasn't been quite as seamless. So I do really want to thank the board for that continued support. Along with that, what has been indispensable has been a common end-of-day plan, end-of-day planning for the teachers because now more than anything, we're trying to be creative over ways we can connect. We never knew how much we planned on the run in the hallway when we saw our colleagues and we could pop over to someone's room next door. We can't do that any longer. We can't share that. So the end of the day has been invaluable for people to catch up with each other. We can do that virtually. We can maintain a safe environment. Likewise, we can connect with our our students who might be remote or have the extra time to be able to reach back with students who weren't in class that day because of they might be on that, their their bulldog day versus their buster day. So that that end of day has been very, very helpful, helpful as well as our Wednesdays. So that that end of day has been very, very helpful, helpful, as well as our Wednesdays. We have to keep remembering each month, we review how many of our students go remote. So when we think about equity, our Wednesdays are very important for making sure we have some consistency throughout the year for all of our students. Times have been crazy, as we all know, so being able to count on those Wednesdays for all of us has been very important for teaching and learning. So moving on to the next slide. While all of those first ones were really had a lot of very fiscal piece, and there's always a piece that is about fiscal responsibility. The rest of our work really has most of its support for student success, a caring culture and talent development. And these aspects are truly interwoven for everything we're doing because we're learning. Teachers are doing PD as they're teaching, as they're trying to build their community, and this is just ongoing, more than any other year. So we have really this year, when you're asking, so how are the kids doing? What are we doing? We have had to review some skills from the previous year. That was common across the district. Our sequence has had to adjust depending on the different topics. People are appreciating the virtual environments for more immediate feedback in some of our, some of our classes. I'm hearing more and more that with that ability to have CSO, our Google environments, kids aren't waiting till the teachers get all the papers, grade them that night and get them back. It's ongoing, it's much more fluid, and that's just getting better and better as we learn more. We are moving at our opportunities for partnering in small group is definitely a challenge, so things are not the same. And, you know, there's less use of hands-on activities because, again, we've had to be creative and find online pieces. The students are really learning about being a little more self-directed, answering their own questions. And I've certainly been in many classrooms and say, hey, Ms. Malinowski, did you try this with the technology? And they're there, and it's great, and nobody worries about that. So as we move along, in language arts specifically, the standards, what they've noticed in looking at the standards, we really focused in K eight on the priority standards. The State Department of Education provided some resources so teachers could really focus on the important standards because our Bolton curriculum is actually very vast, and we really try to hit it all. We try to do it all. So this document has allowed us to really hone in on what the state has identified as the priority standards. And upon reflection, K eight, the teachers felt that they were on track, except they feel that the listening and speaking standards are challenged because of this virtual environment. And as we all know, we're attending more of these meetings, we can understand that. I think the standards written before, we were thinking about maybe some of these speaking and listening standards that may have grown in a digital environment. But yet we can't check that box on that part. The nine through twelve grade, they feel that they are on track with their standards. And then below, I know everybody's curious about, so how do we know? And you will see at the various content areas, the different online platforms that have been most helpful for that department. Doesn't mean it's not used in different departments, but these were the ones that were highlighted most. And certainly things are, you know, the thumbs up, thumbs down, one, two, three, using hand gestures in that regard. The in-person, online conferring, and then again, our our summative assessments. And much of that's very much what we've done all along. Our platforms are different. In math, very similar. What has been a great resource for us is that the Ready Math was designed for a blended learning experience. So for our elementary math class classrooms, it was the big piece of how do we regroup from last year? And the nice thing with Ready Math is they were ready to support us with providing us with materials to to, I don't know if there were gaps that we're talking about, but to fill those needs of maybe you didn't get to a certain unit. And so we were, we were on par. It was, it's great that we have this resource. Nine through twelve, they very much prioritized their work this year around the SAT and making that their priority. The state did not provide priority standards for secondary. So that is how the the teachers decided to to hone their focus first. What is felt at the high school, and as you heard Superintendent Tech reference, math, we will be asking for some devices. Math is really hard to teach in a remote experience, especially the higher you get. And if it's not in the online or written from a program that's already designed for blended learning such as Ready Math, you can't do a long problem very easy, easily without the appropriate resources. So they are finding that it, this has been a challenge across the board. And when I go out into listen and speak with my colleagues in other districts, that that is a common theme out there. And again, below you will see formats that have helped us learn how we know how our students are doing. What is tremendous that you might be wondering about in the Ready Math program, there's something called My Path. It's a totally differentiated, individualized pathway that's based on the assessments that we do with Ready Math. And so how I do versus how Kristen may do, our program will be tailored to us, our strengths as well as our challenges. Again, moving along to the next subject. Science, we were able to have resources on the NGSS priority standards in K five, and the teachers feel they are on track. The online resource that you see below, Mystery Science has been something we've used for a few years. It was more supplemental. This year, teachers are finding that it is a more primary resource because it also has, they've expanded their platform. You know, the company has responded. It also allows for some assessments with it. Likewise, Gizmos is a program that was used limit in limited capacity at the high school. It's an online lab simulation, and I do believe, Mr. Giard, you can give me a thumbs up because I can see you. I believe that the PTA is trying to support our use, our continued use of it at the elementary so that more kids have access to it. So a huge thank you to the PTA for their support in providing another great resource so that we can tell how students are doing. In social studies, a very similar story. The nice thing in the elementary social studies is often integrated with English Language Arts. So that allows us to stay on track. We've all, the difference in our COVID world is that we've integrated a little bit more of the second step lessons in our social studies lesson in K eight. Because as we spoke about earlier this year, including more SEL, the social emotional learning activities, our social studies track or curricula has taken that on to make sure we are continuing to do that so that we've not, we're not missing students when there's so much to do. And six through twelve report that they feel that their students are on track as well. World Language. Again, the teachers, there were no resources provided by the State of Connecticut for our world language teachers. So our teachers did prioritize the standards. They actually started that process last year because everybody teaches pretty much their same subject. So Spanish teachers at the high school stick with Spanish students. The difference is that collaboration between the buildings, and as we know, we've had a turnover in staff. So we are fortunate that last year, there was already a conversation about how to focus our standards. And as you can see, these are the standards that we used. And the difference, another difference being in grade eight, we were able to maintain French for our eighth graders only by using a program, Edgenuity, which is a Band-Aid at best for some students. Some students are doing very well, it's, but it's allowing those students to at least had the basis for continuing on with French and to keep our French program going, it's providing them those opportunities. And then again, we have our CTE, our our college technical. Mr. Maselli, tell me what it is. Why am I always drawing a blank?
Career Technical.
Career. I knew college threw me off. I'm like, no, college. Thank you. Career Technical Education. Our four through eight computers is with ISTI. This has been, I think everybody is getting some some technology standards this year, if they like it or not. And but our, we're continuing on with more focus on on coding than ever. And we were, again, in a response to scheduling needs due to the to COVID. We did add additional computer opportunity for fourth grade, so we did focus with adding some more coding at younger grades. And then the CTE specific standards at the upper levels, teachers are again reporting that they are on track. However, this content area was the one content that across the board felt that they were moving more slowly. Because if you think about a construction class in a pandemic world, in a hybrid schedule, it just doesn't, it's just, they're covering, they're hitting their standards, it's just slower. So that was, that was a one big, that one resonated very loudly. PE and health, they use the, they follow the SHAPE standards. And what was their common message was because of, again, the schedule and their content, there's less opportunity to follow up with people in person. So while kids might do something offline, that that ability when they're face-to-face, that's, that's more of a challenge for them. And again, they also feel that they're covering their their content more slowly. Moving into the arts, both visual arts and music. Our content is again being followed more, covered more slowly. As you do know, it took us a bit to get going in with our music because of safety. So this has been a very challenging area for our music, our performing music, performance music, especially anything with winds, our guitar, as we heard, I believe, last month. Was fortunate to have that opportunity, and anything with percussions also went, went a little more at a normal pace. And then, of course, they're how they, how students perform, and we saw that last month. And again, music theory, which has a strong online component anyway, has had a the least amount of impact. One thing for the visual arts, a students have been encouraged, especially in the upper levels, to create a home art studio, and that has allowed for some students, so that that has been, that actually has been a bit of a challenge because that is something we as a Board of Ed, we can't fix that for students. So students have to do art where they can do art and sort of have that space. So that that has been something that we've been working with the art department so that we can support all of our students to do what what they can do best. And next, Mr. Maselli. There we go. All right, so just going back one. We don't want to get into this yet, Mr. Maselli. I want to make sure anyone has any questions. I need a sip of water before I go on. Chris?
Thank you. So I I have a few questions. And since most of them are quick, I'll just go through them and let you answer them. Will there be state testing in the spring? Would what you've accomplished this fall have been harder at BCS if we were still on a split schedule with the middle school coming in an hour earlier? Is Latin really included in CTE?
Was in the wrong one? Good catch.
Okay, so that was a mistake.
Thank you. I thank you. Thank you, Chris. Thank you. You got that answer. So yes, yes, and thank you.
And then could you talk a bit more about the state priority standards? Who came up with them? And, you know, were they provided by the Department of Education? And can you estimate what percentage of the overall standards are considered to be priority? And then what will a focus only on the priority standards mean for readiness and, you know, preparation of students, especially those who, you know, are going to need to be moving on to courses that might have prerequisites?
So I'm going to move back.
Yeah, can I go first, please?
Yeah.
I want to talk about state assessments first. Actually, I'm going to have Daryl answer the easiest question of all. Daryl, go ahead. The two schedules.
Yes, we are going to have Sback this year have a training.
No, no, Daryl, Daryl, Daryl. No, 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 no. You're answering the question about BCS. Would it have been better? Or worse schedule? Yeah, you're taking that one.
All right, one hundred percent that moving to one schedule has been beneficial during this time and just in a normal time. And the biggest concern was the arrival and dismissal of the parking lot, and and I see you in the morning, Mr. Davies. It's pretty smooth, and even once we get back the other half of the hybrid at the middle school, I was talking to Ms. Williams, the PE teacher who's on a bus with me today. But I think we have, we have a good system and that we figured that part out. So on a whole with staffing and just the classes, the scheduling, like I mentioned with distance learning earlier, having a set schedule, some of the staff would have been kind of funky and kids would have had, it would have been a little off if we were on the split schedule. So it definitely has been great.
So I'm very appreciative that we did that in advance. That helped us a lot in terms of the Sback. As of right now, Sback and State Day SAT are scheduled to happen. I will tell you, there is a lot of discussion happening about whether or not it should happen. I am in superintendent meetings multiple times every week, lots of times talking about COVID, but also talking about the actual work of school as well. And that is a topic that has come up over and over again. And as a whole, superintendents are not in favor of this. We are being asked to have students whose parents or the student themselves are choosing to remain home for learning this year to come into school to take the test. That's a problem. A big one. And it's, it's not being tied to any district-wide results. You know, in the past, we've kind of shown you the district's report card, if you will. That waiver has happened by the feds and is not happening this year. Obviously, we didn't even do testing last year. We do have a new Secretary of Education coming on board hopefully soon. And I am not sure what he is going to do and whether or not waivers are going to be granted for the testing. So that is a stay tuned right now. Now, the longer question that I'm not sure Sarah got all of, because I couldn't write that fast. I will leave to you and Sarah to work out. How's that?
All right, and I felt like I wanted to start with your last question about the preparation. So the priority, so priority standards at some point, so that that actually came out as part of our, when the Common Core. They did identify which were more important to prepare all students for those classes coming. That should prepare everybody. So if we just focus on those and do a great bang-up jab of those, our students are going to be able to move along. The extra, the, all the standards are important. Some just carry more oomph. They, 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 they go more, over more years. They provide the foundations for some of the other standards which might not be called the priority standards. If that makes sense to you. And so in Bolton, you know, we we shoot high and all of our curriculum has attempted to hit all of the standards. So to to back off and to focus in this, during this time, more so on the priority standards, that we're, we're in good shape with that. That doesn't mean we're not looking at the other standards, but we're not making that the primary assessment right now. So, so when we, when we, so how do I know somebody's learned something? I need to assess it in some way. So we're asking that teachers choose the most important because, again, as we heard, the time is less. So focus on assessing those priority standards so we know that we're solid there. And all those other standards, if those happen to be there, you might know it more, more informally. It might be that thumbs up, thumbs, middle thumbs down. I get a sense of it and we can move along. So that's where teachers are using a variety of assessment practices. Assessments do not look like what they used to, and some look like what they used to, depending upon the content, the age of the students, the activities we're asking them to do. So I don't know if that helped.
No, that was very helpful, actually. So I mean, just to make sure I understand, it it sounds like the priority standards really come more into play with the assessment side. It's not that we're cutting back on what is being taught necessarily, but that we are assessing the most important parts of what is being taught.
Right, we're not cutting, so we have cut back. I'm going to be honest, we've had to cut back some things. Right. We're not cutting, so we have cut back. I'm gonna be honest, we've had to cut back some things, mostly topics. But we've made sure we've not cut back anything that's going to make sure our priority standard is solid. If that makes some sense there.
Yeah.
Because assessments also take a lot of time. And so helping our teachers learn how to have assessments also become a learning tool, that's a little of the work we're doing this as well. Now, that, that's nothing new. But it's moving faster this year and teachers will learn, because now I'm learning, perhaps we saw Jamboard up there quite a bit. That's a great way to do formative assessments, like sticky notes online. It's a great feature. Well, now you have a formative assessment. So teacher, or it could be a new summative assessment. So this is all part of that everything moving quickly. So teachers are not, um, we needed to give teachers a guide as to how can I focus. And the priority standards have allowed us to do that. And that, they found that very helpful and uh, the K5 especially because they teach all subject areas. They were very thankful to be able to stop and have this review. I mean, we review more informally, we asked for a very formal review. I, I, I'm serious. It was 65 page. I asked them to do a presentation for the administrative team so that we could have really all the details. And then they, many of them felt that that was not good enough and then created a document on top of that for us. So the teachers really appreciated it. It was an extension of what we did last year. Where we started during the, the distance learning, which was that little bit of a free-for-all to, to evaluate, but we had the basis. So actually, our, our basis of how to reflect on curriculum started last year. And so we were able to move quickly. And again, I have to say, this was a lot, a lot of work. And the teachers, they didn't, they didn't push back. They just did it. And, and it was, I was very thankful.
Well, thank you. That, that was very helpful. Um, I also just wanted to say that it's very encouraging to me to hear that, you know, you, you don't think that our students are falling way behind. And I, I have to think that that's, you know, a credit to you and Superintendent Heck and Mr. Giard and Mr. Maselli and, and everyone for all the work that you all did during the summer to ramp up for this and of course, all of the teachers as well. Definitely to be commended because, you know, we're in a crisis situation and it's the leadership that sets the model for the team to follow. And you guys have clearly set a strong model and have hired the right people to implement it. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm not gonna say, you know, it's not all, all rosy. It's hard. And are some things, you know, if you as a teacher, they're gonna say, no, no, not good enough, you know, at, at their gut. Because teachers really hold themselves up here. And, but it was the reflection that helped them say, because Kristen came to us a bit with like, and it's like, none of them came to us in a panic. Other than what we heard, we knew how music felt early on. They were in a bit of a panic at the start of the school year. The content that can't be, I can't cook. I can't do culinary the same way I did before. So those are real things. So is it across the board? Perfect? No. You know, I'm not gonna, I don't want to paint that picture, but it, at this point, and we're gonna do this again, and we're gonna start looking again at some of our Hager data in March. We feel like March, we'll have some more solid data for us to do an internal look. Between our ready assessments and people have had time now to adjust to everything. So we feel like the, the assessment information will be more, more realistic as to the state of affairs. So, you know, we, we will be updating again later this year. But at this point, we're feeling really good about how our fall went and we've adjusted so how we can move forward.
And our staff, to your point, Chris, before, is absolutely to be commended because they have been nothing short of absolutely positively amazing. Bolton Public Schools is the clear definition of what teamwork is all about from this girl's perspective. Are there other questions?
Thank you, Chris.
Uh, I don't have a question, but I just wanted to um, add my comments to this and just say that anecdotally, um, this year has, you know, it's given me the opportunity to be a fly on the wall. You know, so I've got my three kids in third grade, sixth grade and eighth grade, and I get to hear a little bit of all their class. So uh, you know, watching your presentation, I'm kind of nodding along, like I hear all and this all jives with what I am, uh, you know, understanding from uh, my kids' experiences. The teachers just like knock it out of the ballpark, right? I mean, just everybody has done an amazing job with what we've had to deal with. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Kristen, I feel like I'm gonna have a Kristen moment. I'm feeling a little choked up. I don't, that's not my role, but I am. Thank you. You know, teachers are working really hard and I really am.
And as is Sarah and our administrators.
Ah, yes, they are.
Absolutely. So for sure. Are there other questions? I don't want to leave any questions unanswered. Rhea, I know last time you had some questions about assessment. I hope that this answered the questions that were kind of lingering in your mind.
Yes, thank you.
Good. All right, hearing nothing more, we're gonna move on to technology replacement cycle.
Okay. I need to make my screen bigger for this. Hold on one sec. All right. So before I get into all of the technology and a little bit of what Kristen had mentioned earlier on with a request of a transfer. Part of our technology plan, uh, as you've heard, we are now a one-to-one district and that has happened at a lightning pace. And excuse me, one more moment while I make sure I can see my notes that I'm not missing anything over here. So the chart, the chart in front of you is now considering what do we do? Because a Chromebook, we're gonna work on the assumption that a Chromebook lasts for five years. Five years out, I'm gonna assume that we don't want to be in the position of having to replace the number of Chromebooks that we just took on. So this plan is created with the idea of a way so that we know, that we can keep to replacing no more than three grade levels. So that's anywhere between 50 to 70 in a grade level, depending upon the year. So at most 210 Chromebooks, if you had, if it was big, big grades in everyone, but that's not really typical. So keeping that as a fiscal goal. We're also going to make an assumption that moving forward, once this year settles down and into next year, that we can get us into some best practices with, at the elementary level where our devices will live mostly in the classroom. So we will be a one-to-one district. But in a ideal world, students aren't wrecking that device back and forth, especially at the youngest, for our youngest learners. Obviously, for the foreseeable future, we really need to make sure we're one-to-one and that's what this plan makes sure of. So where you see that the K through three is in gray, that's because those are the grades that we would like to make sure those devices stay within their grade level. And as we look out, our first column is 2021. And this is our current status. Our kindergartners have the five-year-old Chromebooks. And then you'll see one through five. The majority are one-year-olds. These are our newest Chromebooks. And then six through eight has some of the ones we bought previously. And then the high school has a mix. The high school also, while we do have enough devices to give a device to every high school student. Let me, uh, I think, and I think it might be Ms. Johnson, you may be able to help me in this a little bit. It's about a third, if not more, of our students take a school device. Kids, most of the kids have their own device. At the high school?
Most do. We, most, I'd say, yeah, maybe a third to a half of our students.
Yeah, I think it's a six, like a 60-40 split.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, so that, that, so what we've had has worked very well with that. Now, moving out for the number of the years, ideally, next year, we can get new Chromebooks for our kindergartners. And then moving forward, those devices would stay with that grade level. So here's their age out over the years. And then the second grade, assume they keep the ones, I mean, the first grade, assume they keep the ones that they have. Again, they would age out. You begin to see a star. Well, it, this third year, they're still good after that third year. But I want to scatter, I'd like us to scatter when we purchase our new Chromebooks. And so we'll use these, retire these to be used up at the high school or other grade, or other areas. So those will go into our reserve. So that's how this chart is read for that. So that we get to a point where every fourth grader will then get a new device that will then travel with them. And that's the device that will carry on. At the end of eighth grade, those devices will be handed in. Anyone that still has a viable lifespan will be put into our extra pile because we do need extras. Those certainly have saved us in many ways. And then high school will then become in charge of their own Chromebooks. And then begin to age that out. And then we can, we'll also be able to adjust our numbers as we move along in this plan because we'll know how many high schoolers are really needing devices for all that. So this is the Chromebook intention. Any questions about this? Hearing none. This will take me on to now all of our technology. So all of our technology has changed. My old plan has been blown out of the water. And it's not necessarily a bad thing, but there's a lot to consider. So this is this year, you'll see fiscal year 21. This is, these are all the things we have purchased, anything that is not italicized. These are the things at Bolton Center School that we have purchased with this year's funds. As you've seen in previous, uh, some point last year, I believe, we talked about things we bought with last year's money. A big number of our Chromebooks came at that time. So this year, you can see the various pieces that we purchased. The ViewSonic boards, I'm sorry, and I also mentioned that we um, also have the various funding sources that we were able to use this year between general fund, open choice grant, and then the coronavirus relief fund grant. Which has helped as well. So one of the pieces, um, I'll, I'll do. I'm not gonna talk about the, uh, let me review it. No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'll come back to the boards and talk about boards all at once. Two pieces that we've not purchased yet are some math laptops that Kristen had mentioned earlier for our math department, as well as some more boards. So let's look at the high school before I move on to talking about those specific things. So, so far this year, we've been able to purchase 15 ViewSonic boards. That allows us to make sure all of the boards at the high school are now replaced with a ViewSonic board or a TV. So now, I, I know you've heard in the past, we were working on a replacement plan for our smart boards throughout the district and it was, still had a couple more years with that. In fact, we started this year with about 42 boards to replace and we're trying to do this a little faster because what we have learned is that we now ask teachers to travel and we're asking everybody to connect with devices. And once you have a room that has a board that doesn't work well, you no longer have equitable access to, to the instruction. So it really is paramount that we get our boards, all of our boards working at an equal functioning rate. So that's been, that's, that's been our shift in priority. And you see that the 15 boards were purchased. They were delivered yesterday and we will begin installing as soon as possible. So then the Bolton High School will be whole with new boards from, the oldest ones are three years old. This is their third year. Yes, year number three for it. So what you also see on here are the touchscreen laptops for the math department. As you've heard a few times this evening, math is very difficult to teach in this virtual environment. We've tested quite a few different devices, quite a few, from something, you know, trying to be as fiscally as responsible as possible. And what we found that will do work best with allowing teachers, our, our secondary teachers, meaning six through 12 teachers, to run both ready math for our middle school, but also Kuta works, which is a program we've talked about in the past. We've had it, we the teachers have used it for years, but now it has a program for Chromebooks that allow students to work in mathematic notation, especially in the high school courses. That's helpful. But ask a teacher to write out a long math problem, get into your advanced math and try to write out a long problem and have a child follow it on a digital screen in real time is pretty much impossible if you don't have the right materials. The document cameras just haven't been working for the, for the teachers. They've tried, that's what they use. It's fair. It's okay. But with, um, we've tried out, we've tested a touchscreen device and it allows teachers to make it feel more real. So that when they are teaching, it is um, immediate feedback. They can work on problems and students don't have that delay and lag in time that all the other programs offer. So that is our request for like, uh, wanting to get uh, two-in-one laptops. And that means the ones that fold over to be like a tablet so that they can, can continue to purchase. You also see on this, uh, BHS is 100 student Chromebooks. We put an order in for them in August. They are still somewhere, somewhere. So my Chromebook replacement plan did not include them. I, I don't know where they are. I think we're gonna have to make that decision as we finally hear where they are. We do ask our vendor weekly. Uh, we are able to complete this year just, you know, we're doing okay, just fine without it. They, would it be better with it? Yes. Because we're now starting to have to give some of our newer elementary students some of the older ones, you know, it's but we're doing fine. It would be great when we know where they are. So this year, as you can see, our technology between the two schools, the total is $137,280. Uh, should the board be willing to um, help support us in getting BCS whole as well as we're able to do at, at BHS? So I don't know if, Kristen, you want to add to that?
Yeah, no, I just think, you know, to echo Sarah's sentiments, it's essential that we're on the same platform. Uh, we really can't continue uh, in this blended learning model. Having different boards, having boards fail, it's just not equitable and we just can't have it. Uh, so if we, are there questions on this year? Right now? All right, hearing none. If we could go to the next slide, please.
No, a couple more. Next one. We'll come back. Back. One more. There we go.
So at this point, uh, I'm requesting a transfer of $50,800 from benefits to instructional technology to purchase 20 ViewSonic interactive boards for the BCS classrooms, as well as a transfer of $3,500 from fiscal to instructional technology to purchase seven touchscreen two-in-one laptops for the math teachers in grade six to 12.
Do we want this as one or two motions?
Uh, if we can have it as two, that would be great.
Do we have a motion to approve a transfer of $50,800 from benefits to instructional technologies to purchase 20 ViewSonic interactive boards for BCS classrooms?
So moved.
Thank you, Sarah.
Second, this is Anne.
Thank you, Anne.
Do, and Anne, do we have any questions about the ViewSonic boards or discussion on this topic transfer?
Scott does.
Yeah.
So just projecting, if we transfer money from one, one section to another, and then we find that the monies that are gonna, in this next grant package, support technology or something like that, do we transfer it back? How do, you know, how do we get reimbursed for the technology if we've paid for it out of a different fund?
So in the last coronavirus relief, we couldn't um, actualize any of the monies until we actually had the product in hand. So we had to pay for it already and then basically re-
So we had to pay for it already and then basically reimburse ourselves, which you saw show up in tonight's.
Right.
Right? So it would be the same thing. I don't expect however necessarily, I would be surprised, let me put it this way, if the coronavirus relief funds allowed for the purchase of boards. I wouldn't be surprised if they would allow us to purchase Chromebooks, but I will be surprised if they allowed us to purchase boards.
So as far as you're concerned, if we pay for it ahead of time, whatever fund, it just gets reimbursed to the general fund?
Correct.
Even though it's for our line, particular line limits?
Yes. Great question.
Okay, hearing nothing, all those in favor of this transfer, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Passes unanimously. Now, could we have a motion to transfer $3,500 from the fiscal account to instructional technologies to purchase seven touchscreen two-in-one laptops for the math teachers in grade six to 12?
So moved.
Thank you, Sue.
Me, Will second.
Thank you, Rhea.
Do, and Rhea, do we have any questions or discussion on this transfer? Hearing none, all those in favor of this transfer, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? Thank you, that passes. Does that conclude our report?
Thank you, everybody. No, we still have a couple more years to do for you, but I appreciate very much, as does our staff, and Sarah, and Daryl, and Joe, very much. Thank you.
And I'll make this a little faster, okay. So what this means for next year, so when we're into our next year needs, and this is what we're looking at, to get on to that cycle, 130 Chromebooks, and that is assuming we get the 100 Chromebooks.
Right.
So I'm going to go with, we're going to get them and that's what we would need for BCS so that we can get new ones for kindergarten, then another grade level. At this time, we've made BHS whole, they have no immediate needs for next year. The following year, you now see our Chromebooks continuing on, we have added the Chromebook cases, that's something that we were also able to purchase this year. That is, again, new to us, so we're estimating they have a five-year lifespan and making sure that we have extras in place. At this time, we'll have extras, we have extras at this point, so we're fine for next Another piece that we are piloting, that we are looking to pilot in our ViewSonic, we also were able to get a mini board. One thing this platform offers is a 24-inch version of their board. So teaching in a one-to-one classroom, especially as you move up in the years, you actually need to start to teach behind the students or be able to move around the classroom. So as wonderful as the interactive boards are, they often glue a teacher to the front of the room. So we're all going to be dreaming and happy and healthy in 22, 23, and teachers are going to move around the room and we're going to see a little bit of a normal classroom. But now all of our students are going to have devices. So the ViewSonic mini board is a board that will allow teachers to then work from wherever they are in the room and it can project to the front of the room. So those devices are about 600 and some change right now each. We are having a teacher try one out this year, but this, something like this where you can cast is something we're very interested in moving forward as we look to, say, a one-to-one district. In the younger grades, we would anticipate it as a station. So I know if you've seen, some primary classrooms have had tables in the back, things like that, this could then just be another station for teachers to use. So this is what the mini boards, we would like to consider as future planning. Another piece that we would like to at least put out there, we don't have hard quotes this time, is also classroom amplification systems. So while this is something that superintendent and Hatt and I have had intimate experience with and are huge proponents of, and I know other people have as well, the coronavirus and pandemic has certainly made us aware of how important the sound is for all of our learners. So amplification systems, if you've ever taught, look, and a few people have been in classrooms with an amplification system, it saves the teacher's voice and it increases, I forget what the decibels were, it's like 10 decibels up, it's just enough, and student attention all the way around improves, their learning improves, there's all sorts of research behind how these amplification systems improve learning. So not only does it do that for people in person, should we still need to have to be in a distance? This will only enhance our ability to have a blended learning experience and it puts us in good shape for just really solid, a solid technology classroom that has the student at the center, the learning at the center, not the devices. This is also the year that we would anticipate replacing the teacher desktops. So this is a, that's the number you would see for that. At the high school, Chromebooks, the Chromebook cases, the mini boards, and then the amplification system. And again, this is a futures planning and as we've seen, things change. So I'm sure we'll have a more, something a little different next year, but this is what we're thinking about.
Exactly. Thank you, Sarah, very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Sarah before we move on?
Let's have a couple of quick questions and kind of just one thing, looking forward, you talk about those mini boards and I started thinking about, students start coming back, the teaching pedagogy may still rely more on the technology that we're on the Chromebooks at every one-to-one. Does, is there any concern or about the Wi-Fi capacities and the infrastructure to handle that type of?
No.
Increase? Okay.
No, we've been on that one. We've been asking that.
We were already primed for that, Scott, we had put in extra, what do you call them, Joe, Sarah?
More access points and an increase in bandwidth over the last couple of years, like a major step up from the original infrastructure.
Okay.
We've been hoping to move to something, you know, long-term planning, this is a vision of good teaching practice, so we've been trying to make sure our infrastructure was in place for that, should we be able to go there.
And this is more for Kristen, just to kind of the confirmation, you know, we've done these budget transfers and quite a few to handle different expenses. I just want to confirm, we have not had to go back to the town, to the Board of Finance for any additional monies, correct?
That is correct.
We haven't had to request dipping into the contingency fund that was put in place. So we've been able to still manage it with reimbursements and expected reimbursements from the grants, but with managing the budget.
Correct.
So, since I think that's important to keep track of.
Yes, thank you.
When people start questioning the volume of transfers.
Correct.
If people, sorry, if people do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, that concludes this evening. Chair O'Neil, on to you, sir, for unfinished business. Thank you, Sarah.
Okay, thank you very much. Unfinished business, we have one policy, second read, we'll be looking for a motion to approve the policy change for 6161.21, fees, fines, and charges.
I'll make that motion, this is Chris.
Thank you.
Second.
Second.
Was that Sue?
Someone else?
Ben got it in first, I think.
Oh, he did? Okay, thank you, thank you, Chris and Ben.
Okay, any further discussion or questions on this policy? Very simple, straightforward change. Hearing none, all those in favor of the policy change, please say aye.
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 Opposed or abstaining? That passes unanimously, and that is all of our unfinished business. We have some new business tonight. The first item is the BHS graduation date.
Yes, thank you. So as the board is aware, or maybe not, currently, our last day of school is June 10th, 2021. And by statute, this you are aware of, last year, statute changed whereby the board can set a graduation date for the 180th day of school and the night they set it, that becomes the date within that school year. So I'm requesting a motion to set June 10th, even though it's a little wonky this year because we have 177 days, but we've been checking with the state, so we're within where it's the last day of school. So a motion to set June 10th, 2021, as the Bolton High School graduation date is the request this evening.
I'd like to make that motion.
Thank you, Ben.
Rhea will second.
Thank you, Rhea.
Is there anyone who would like to ask any questions or any discussion?
Was June 10th the original last day of school or was it June?
No, it was June 9th.
And then we had that one snow day, okay.
Correct.
If we have another major snow event, like the one-to-two-foot category with wind potential, which is why we had a snow day because of potential power outages, so that students would not be able to learn remotely, what would we do in this instance?
Mr. Miss Ellie?
We would just, you know, we would adjust. So first of all, we hope that if there's snow, we're in the remote mode, right? So that's goal number one. And then there'll be enough time, you know, ahead of time to kind of figure out how to adjust, but it will stay our date. And we're, and I'll share that with the faculty tomorrow, so it'll always be in their heads.
Yep, and Mr. Giard?
Sorry, I'm printing something, hold on one second.
Yay.
With my new printer.
Yeah.
The...
So they would just, you know, we would have school until that day, that's just how it would be. And as for seniors, you know, it might be, we have to tell them, you know, you can come back tomorrow, because that's pretty much what the statute allows. That's where it is.
And we're primed for the distance learning, so if it were a snow day, we're to have it, we're in great shape.
But to your point, Andrew, if it's a snow day and we can't have virtual learning, we're still primed to address it by setting the date tonight.
Just to, just to make sure I understand that correctly, if there were to be snow days, it would extend the school year for everyone but the seniors, is that correct?
Yeah, well, technically, we tell the seniors that they come back.
They can come back.
A locker cleanout will be the day after graduation.
Yeah, you know, and maybe yearbook signing or something, you know. But yes.
Have to get pens on six-foot-long sticks.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, all those in favor of setting the BHS graduation date, say aye.
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 Opposed or abstaining? BHS graduation will be June 10th.
Great.
Which leads into our next new business item of the Board of Ed meeting on June 10th.
So I'm suggesting that we reschedule it to Wednesday, June 9th.
So do we have a motion to reschedule the June 10th, 2021 Board of Education Business Meeting to Wednesday, June 9th?
So moved, this is Ann.
Thank you, Ann.
Seconded, Sue.
Thank you, Sue.
Like to question why we are doing this? Or discuss it? Hearing nothing, all those in favor of moving the June Board of Education Meeting to the 9th, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed or abstaining? That also passes unanimously, and our last item is resignations.
So we have one resignation this evening, Caitlin Jones, Administrative Assistant and Guidance, has resigned. We'd like to thank her for her service and she will be greatly missed. That is all.
Do, do we have any future business? Okay, so now we will be looking for a motion to go into executive session to discuss the transportation contract renewal proposal from M&amp;J Bus Company and to invite the superintendent of schools.
I would make a motion for that purpose and to invite the superintendent.
Thank you.
I'll second that, Chris.
Thank you.
You, any questions or discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstaining?
The recording has stopped.
Thank you, everyone else, for coming tonight, and we will all be signing off and going to our executive session Zoom meeting. The email is sent on January 8th, so the link should be in that email.
Thanks, everybody. Good night.